And then I do it. I can reach everything, but I can't reach anything. Outside, we didn't even get there. Want to sit there? What do you call it? The one that's in the ceiling windows.
Oh, yeah. I did it for them. I can do this.
Hi, Barry. Hi, Barry. How are you doing? How's Angela? I'm okay. Or is there some sign in? Yeah, I do.
Good evening. Welcome to zoning board appeals for the town of Webster.
Here.
10th, 2024. As we have open public discussion timeframe, we will be limiting that time to five minutes per speaker. We have a total of one table matter today and two scheduled matters that we'll be reviewing on today's agenda. We do have at 10 p.m., we do reserve the right to anything that hasn't been completed to postpone until the next meeting. And the proof of legal publication for all items here that we found out. That, or attempts.
Mrs. Bola, here. Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. Shore.
Here.
Mr. Santola.
Here.
Mr. Lagan.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
And our journey will be...
All staff of the pledge of allegiance.
Stood by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite in justice and rule.
That is... Type one Bay Road Port Coche here.
Yeah.
Do you guys...
Favor report for share located at 712 Bay Road. Advocate Michael Netease is requesting an area variance to allow a front setback less than what is required associated with the construction of a 300 square foot port share covered by more additions to the existing single family residence. Excuse me, at a 1.57 acre parcel having SPL number 063.19-1-2.1 located in an R3 single family residential district under section 350-12 of the code of the town of Webster.
And I'm going to ask you to speak into the mic, so feel free to move that wherever you need to to make it easy for you to speak into. Because I can't hear you in the corner. So, welcome. And tell us a little bit about the project.
Okay, we're doing an addition on the front of this residence. And what we're doing is trying to make it as handicap friendly as possible because we have two people that live there. They're pretty much wheelchair bound. And we decided after we did all the renovations to make the kitchen and the entryway more handicap friendly. It would be nice to have a covered area for loading and transporting of these two individuals in a covered area because they are in wheelchairs and that sort of thing.
The addition, that's not part of this. It's more, it's just for the drive through, correct?
Correct. It turns out that the two posts are 57 feet based on the new survey from Bay Road from the edge. And I mean, it is an open format for those support posts. It's not blocking any view or anything, but there's two six by six posts that fall out of compliance that we're asking that we can allow for the structure to be built.
Basically, it's the two quarters closest to Bay Road.
Correct.
Come look up at the screen, is that...
Correct.
More having questions?
I see two dimensions, 55 and 57.
The 57 number is what the gentleman at the building department told us. We ended up separating when we filed for the permit for the addition work. We ended up separating the port for share until we had this meeting and we do folks before we could see if we could carry on. And at that point, he had mentioned to me the 57 feet is the distance. I'm not really sure of that, if it's 55 or 57. I was just basing that on what he said.
What are you proposing the distance be from your property line of the street to...
To those posts?
Yes.
I was under the understanding it was 57 feet and that to be in compliance, it had to be 60. The 55 number is the first time I heard that.
It's just up on a screen. It's a proposed carport 55 feet from the road. That's why we're asking.
Okay. And that could be accurate.
To clarify, I was the one that transposed the building plans that were provided onto the survey map.
Gotcha.
And when I scaled it out, I came up with the 55.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is if we are to move forward with a variance, it will be stated what that distance is. So, we're trying to be as accurate as possible. So, if it's 55, great. If it's 57, now you've just lost three feet. So, we want to make sure...
Let's go with 55.
Fair enough. Okay. Other questions?
It's such a heavy part of the addition and it's open.
With that, I'll bring up to the public if they have any comments, questions regarding this project. Back to the board. Wasn't my question on the survey area still up? Good? All right. With that, I'd like to make a motion for a type two action under seeker pursuant to NYCRR section 617.5 of the environmental code.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, please.
I'll say the request is not out of character in the neighborhood in that it's not going to look out of place to look like an addition to the open porch. The detriment will not be created to nearby properties. It's far enough away from the neighboring properties that it's certainly not going to be a nice or visual if any visual impact at all. It is an open carport type structure. Jennifer had achieved all that in the other method. They missed the location of the driveway and the front door of the house. So, they missed the logical location for it. The request is not substantial. It's only five feet of the structure is going to be within the front setback. From the road, you're not going to know the difference. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or to the neighborhood that's suspected. And the difficulty is not self-created. In that case, in this case, the resident is trying to make the house more handicap accessible for the residents. And this is the logical location. Anything else for anyone to add?
I'll make a motion to grant an area variance at 712 Bay Road for a port for share or an overage carport to be added to the front of an existing single family structure. It will be a 300 square foot open structure that will be covered. And it will be a front setback of 55 feet or 60 feet as required on a 1.57 acre parcel with SPL number 063.19-1-2.1 located in an R3 single family residential district.
Mrs. Bola?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Lagan?
Aye.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
Mr. Shore?
Aye. You have your variance for 55 feet for your carport on the road. You have one year to complete the project and you must obtain a building permission.
I like the addition, not to be enclosed.
Not to be, and it's not to be enclosed.
Not playing the game.
I understand.
We'll put that addition on.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
Congratulations and you have a good day.
Thank you very much.
With that, our second applicant for the garage replacement.
Do we have to fully table the...
I'll do it.
But I'll make a motion that the applicant at 671 with the ruling is requested to table this application until October 8th and make a motion to do so.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, here's... Graduate replacement at 786 Webster Road. Advocate Thomas Stopins is requesting an area variance to allow both side and rear setbacks less than what is required and to exceed the level of size in relation to the main residence associated with the construction of a new 30 foot by 22 foot 660 square foot accessory structure on a 0.25 acre parcel having SPL number 065.18-1-9 located in an R3 single family residential district under sections 350-12 and 350-36 of the code of the town of Webster.
Is Thomas Stopins here? Come on up.
Good evening. So, I'm here to help...
Can you speak into the mic a little more?
Thomas Stopins. So, what we want to do is remove the existing garage that's in a state of disrepair. And it was built within, we had the property surveyed. It was in within nine inches of the property line. So, if you look at the picture, we presently use the downstairs of the property to build wheelchairs for small children. So, we've done about 3,000 over the last seven years. And when Mrs. Wager passed away, she wanted this to continue. So, Carl has been very supportive of us. And we take good care of the property. A lot of the people who come and visit have to use the handicap ramp. So, we can move the new structure over probably three feet from the line. But this property was built back in 1900. And I looked at three of the properties south of there and those garages are within three feet of the property line and a number of the other ones on the other side of the street. So, it seems to be that back in the day before the setbacks were required, they were allowed to build close to the property line. So, what we want to do is replace the structure with 22 by 30 pole barn type structure so we can continue with the program that we're doing. Some of the sponsors of Allos Bambas, Gollustonos Children Hospital, Carpus Family Foundation, Shoe Metal Workers Union helps us out with a lot of stuff. Mary Cariola, Miracle Field, McMahon LaRue Engineers. Also, we work with Boy Scouts, CDS Monarch, National Auto Society, Charles Family School. A lot of those programs come and help us out and do projects.
So, as I was reading through the application, I had one question. The drawings indicated, I just had a little hard time reading the drawings. It looked like a 15-foot E pipe and then another area.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you speak a little louder?
Yeah, absolutely. On the drawings that you provided, page A1, it looks like, I just had a hard time reading it, but it looks like it indicated 18 foot to the E pipe. But then on the location, it was indicating something different of nine feet. What is the, do you know what the overall height of the structure is going to be?
Your refer to the print?
Yeah, the prints that ever since, yes.
Yeah, so what I drew on there was, I drew over the top of the existing structure.
I'm sorry, not the print that's on the screen. It was a...
There are potentials.
This guy.
Oh, the neutral E?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah. That dimension to the left of Josh's cursor in the middle, that's to the right of the cursor, right there. It looks like it reads about 16 or 18 feet, but then on one of the next pages, three pages beyond, it shows about nine feet. Keep going, that page there, right down a little more.
Yeah, what this was, they sent us a preliminary print. There'd be a little more detailed drawings.
What my question to you is, what is the height of the building going to be? Or I mean, I'm assuming nine feet is what we're looking for?
Eight foot.
Eight foot?
Eight foot from the slab.
To the bottom?
That way we can have a seven foot door. We're planning on taking the existing door out, which is in good shape, it's been replaced. And then we're going to reinstall that along with a man door.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the second drawing. After the second.
And this is going to be a pole barn structure? And based on the prints that we have, metal siding, metal roof?
Yeah.
Is what the intent is for this?
We'll probably put some insulation in. It doesn't show on the print right now. We're not showing any interior fetishes. We have, we're going to bring electric out to it.
So, this is going to be a workshop?
No.
No?
No, so with storage.
Just storage?
Yeah, right now, we're just really impressed with storage. We have five different models of wheelchairs that we ship all over the world. And right now, we have a container on the job that's on the property that's going to be removed. So, that's why we want a little larger garage plus the fact that it's fallen down.
Gotcha.
There are reasons for insulation and electricity and stuff. Mostly, we store a lot of cardboard boxes are in there. And if they get the humidity, the cold, the heat back and forth, then they'll be ruined.
Mr.? Josh or the board?
The concerns I have is obviously they're looking to minimize their cost of their new construction. Based on my knowledge, you're actually building the code requires a three-foot setback for combustible materials or concrete line. What they're requesting, that whole wall in that building, we have to be not combustible material. It should be extremely expensive. Have you received any variance from the permanent stay?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble... There is concern with New York State Building Code. And I don't have it in front of me. Potentially needing a minimum of three feet off the property line for fire purposes for anything that is combustible on the property line itself. That would include the six or so wood posts that would be holding up the structure. So, that would be one concern that we have. Now, I believe I had heard you earlier in your presentation that you could move it over about three or four feet from its current location.
Yeah, moving it over because we were just looking for a single car, a single eight, nine foot door. And we're planning on expanding the driveway out. So, we could move it over three feet from the property line. That would not be a problem.
Okay.
But we'll still be okay with that. You could probably also step the new garage back further from the house to make up for the three feet that you shifted. Well, except we set back. It's moving back a little bit further than what it was because we have, there is a turnaround to access the handicap ramp.
Right.
Yeah, so we're going to be approximately five foot back from the corner of the house.
You said five feet back from the corner of the house?
Approximately five feet.
Josh, is a variance needed for the operation that is happening inside the house as well?
No, we talked with the applicant about the nature of the operation. And we did feel that it rose to the level of requirement used variance.
Okay, thank you.
I have some brochures that you'd like to take a look at them as far as...
I was on your website and I think it's great what you guys do. I mean, it's just, I want to make sure everything is on the up and up is what it comes down to. So, I have no problem with it. It's just more of, I'll make sure we have it out in our eyes across time.
Yeah, it's all, it's volunteers that come in a couple of times a week.
Excellent.
We haven't really repurposed the inside of the building. I mean, it's still basically a livable home with a small apartment upstairs.
Gotcha. I don't know, I don't, I haven't memorized the building codes. I don't know if it is three feet, four feet, five feet off of the property line. But if we were to vote, we can vote.
And just comply with the New York State law.
We vote, that's kind of what my vote was. I think you're right, otherwise I just don't know specifically.
Again, I'm trying to cut through costs. And it's, you know, it's re-operation you're offering. Certainly understand you want to cut down the cost of what you're proposing. I'm just trying to help you.
Thank you. Well, and does the applicant, the applicant can certainly locate the building further in from the lot line with whatever the variance is that's created as well if it deals, if it's cost prohibitive somewhere.
Any questions, comments from the board?
And we do have a letter, the neighbor to the south that's impacted at 786, it says a letter that they have no objection to this.
You actually have multiple letters?
Yeah, we got letters from all the joining neighbors including across the street. Nobody seemed to have an objection. They're digging it where it was. We're happy to move it over.
Well, it's part of the plan, it's not changing a whole lot. It is not that, but it's...
It's not significant.
It's not significantly larger, the depth is...
The majority, the majority, the big portion is going to be... Is that all, I'll bring it up to the public? If there's any, anybody want to speak for or against this project, the public?
No, it's a great idea. Build a wheelchair, we're all going to need one someday.
Can you offer your name and address, sir? Your name and address? I'd rather not give my name.
I'll bring it back to the board. Any other questions or comments from the board? No? All right. With that, I make a motion for a type two action under seeker pursuant to NYCRR section 617.5 of the environmental code.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Lightings?
Sure. The applicant doesn't change the essential character of the neighborhood and will not be a detriment to it. While there are other remedies based on the needs that the applicant has, I believe that it is the minimal relief necessary to get what they need to do. The question area variance is not substantial both in size and location. And the granting of this variance amounted in first, or adverse, impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And while it is self-created, once again, the relief requested is minimal. And I think it's a good product.
Anybody else want to add anything?
The setback is going to be greater with the new building than it currently is, so it's actually going to improve the condition.
Yep. So, I'll make a motion for area variance located at 786 Webster Road to allow both a side and rear setback less than what is required. Side setback to match or meet the minimum of New York State Building Code.
Two feet?
Three feet.
Would the condition that complies with the New York State Building Code?
And to exceed the allowable size in relation to the main resident associated with the demo of a one car garage, the new structure will be 30 feet by 22 feet or 660 square feet accessory structure on a 0.25 acre parcel having SPL 065.18-1-9 located in an R3 single family residential district under sections 350-12, 36, and...
Mr. Shore?
Aye.
Mrs. Bola?
Aye.
Mr. Santola? Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Lagan?
Aye.
You have your variance to build your structure. You have one year to complete the project. You need to obtain New York's building permit. And again, it is minimum three feet off the property line and it needs to meet New York State Building Code.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next applicant, Waterview Apartments, Phase Three. You guys won't mind coming up. This is going to be really just a conceptual discussion. This board will not vote on this for this evening's meeting. We will open to any public comments after the conceptual presentation. So with that, if you wouldn't mind stating your name. Oh, sorry, thank you, jump in the gun.
Waterview Apartments, Phase Three, located at the northwest corner of Willow Point Way and Nuttall Drive. Advocate Legacy Development Company Incorporated is requesting area variances to allow, number one, a front setback less than what is required. Number two, a district buffer less than what is required. Number three, a building length longer than what is permitted. And four, less parking spaces than what are required associated with the construction of two forty-five unit apartment buildings, each three stories in height and a proposed thirteen point one-five acre parcel of an SBL number zero number three point zero six dash three dash sixty-four point eleven, located in an NHR median by residential district under section 350 dash fourteen of the code of the town of Weston.
Good evening. My name is Jess Sudol with Passor Associates. We're an engineering architect for representing Legacy Development Company. Mr. Chris DiMarzo is here with me on behalf of Legacy Development Company. So the parcel that we're presenting this evening in, again, Mr. Chairman, thank you for clarifying that we are, have zero expectation of any kind of approval tonight. We're just hoping to gain some comments from this board and potentially members of the public. Because this project does have quite a long history, going all the way back to the original Willow Point butt, which is, as we know, no longer in effect, that was almost forty years ago. At the time, it was originally contemplated to be a seven-story building with a hundred and fifty-eight units, which was obviously quite large. Approximately five years ago, another proposal was brought forward that was five stories, depending on how you measure with the grade there, and approximately a hundred and twenty units. And then that project was since tabled or put aside. Now here in 2024, we're proposing two three-story buildings, each one of them being forty-five units each. So that's a total of ninety units. We did appear before the planning board last week and received a lot of helpful comments that we are working with the applicant to find different ways to address. And we're thankful to be here this evening to give this board the same opportunity to provide comments so that once we can go back to our design table and collectively review all the input that we've had from, you know, various stakeholders, both here in the town and also the neighbors, potentially revise our proposal to something that could incorporate some of those comments. Again, because we're not seeking approval tonight, it won't be too terribly long. As you can see, or if you're not aware, that's McGowan's, McEwen Street, all right, to the north or drive. This sits in the back kind of the south, or I'm sorry, northwest corner of the Willow Point development. Josh, if you go back to that overall plan, or that one there shows it as well. The project would disturb approximately four acres. The entire site of the property under control by the applicant is roughly thirteen acres. So everything, for the most part, that's west of, right there where Josh is showing where was that property line, isn't proposed to be impacted by the development. So just to review the variances that are requested quickly, it's a really unique site. It's really the last piece that was left over after this thing was carved up over the years and the majority of it is built out. It is the last developable piece in the overall Willow Point project. The first variance that we are requesting has to do with a buffer from single-family homes. Typically, when we see this buffer, it's in a situation where you have a zoning line in between two different properties, where one is a own single family, one might be a zone multifamily. And you're trying to ensure that you have proper separation and screening from the single-family homes, which are in the single-family district. In this case, because we are largely surrounded by roadways, either public or private, that buffer is enforced to the north, which is actually on the other side there of the public roadway. It's a hundred fifty foot, or a hundred foot buffer, I'm sorry, is measured from their front property line, which would be the right-of-way line of the public road. The house itself, I believe, is actually a hundred thirty-six feet from that property line. So that's in excess of the buffer, but because that buffer is enforced from the property line and not the actual structure, it requires us to have, us to have that variance. And the buffers aren't just the buildings, it's also parking areas. And you can see there, we do have some parking in that area on the north side of our project where we're running around second building. The second variance that we're requesting is for the front setback. And again, this is kind of a unique parcel because we more or less have three front setbacks, or at least two front setbacks, because it's a corner lot. We are able to meet that setback for ninety percent of the project. But if you look at the one bang of building to the left where it's kind of angled there, that little corner of the building does approach on that setback area. But, you know, if that were considered a side yard, if that public weren't there, we wouldn't have the setback variance required. So it is somewhat of a unique result of the geometry and of the parcel and how it exists today. Third variance we are requesting has to do with parking from the two spaces per unit. The whole idea of parking and doing it on a per-unit basis has been around for decades and decades. We found through doing a lot of multifamily projects here in Western New York and elsewhere, that the more appropriate way of assessing an actual parking need and not overbuilding a project, and what I mean by overbuilding is you don't want necessarily build parking that you're not going to need. That's additional cost, that's additional impervious area, that's additional stormwater impact, that's additional impact on the environment. So when we do a project, we propose the amount of parking that we know that we need. Not only has our company done a lot of multifamily projects, gone back to them after they're built and done studies on occupancy rates and see how many cars are actually in the lot. But Mr. DiMarzo and his group have done many projects, many, many projects over the years, and conducted similar analysis. So the way that we sized the parking was one space for the one-bedroom units. And there are a lot of one-bedroom units in this project. And then two spaces for the two and three-bedroom units. So, and one of the reasons why units, in my opinion, isn't always the best way to gauge the amount of parking that's needed. A building with a hundred units that are all one-bedroom units is going to have a much different parking demand than a building with a hundred units that are all three and four-bedroom units. So again, we try to look at bedrooms and the amount of people that may actually be living there, which is why we are proposing the parking in the current configuration with the current number. This is a variance that we've obtained actually here in the town on other projects. But certainly worthy of discussion and we're happy to do so. Then lastly is the building length. I believe the building length is restricted to a hundred and sixty-five feet. Our building, or each of the buildings, because they're essentially the same, are approximately two hundred and twenty-nine feet in length, which is in excess of that. The town code does allow you to increase the allowable length to two fifty, which would be longer than our building if you do provide access to all sides of the building. In our case, we are providing access to three sides with what we would call a fire apparatus road. And then you have additional access from the infrastructure that's in place today. So in order for us to do that, we would have to move the building that's on the left side, further to the left, and then try to put a fire driveway in between those buildings, where I'm not so sure is where firefighters would want to be fighting a fire anyway. So those are the four area variances that we are seeking. Again, we're very early on the process. We had our first meeting, as I stated previously, with the planning board, received a lot of good input at that time. We're hoping to do the same this evening and eventually come back with a plan that, you know, addresses some of those comments and concerns, if there are any. And with that, I'm happy to hear from the board or anybody else.
Do we have any questions in this board? Or the planning board comments? Remember, any who came by.
We talked about those from MRB, right? But I hope you. Yeah, sitting at planning.
Did the planning board reduce the rating? Did the planning board reduce the funding? Their comments were incorporated into the MRB.
Yeah, we do have a copy of the MRB letter. If there's any comments specifically you'd like me to address now, I'm happy to do so.
That's the September ninth letter, right? Yesterday?
That's the one I have.
Questions, comments from the board?
You know, it's a conceptual, was any thought given to potentially, since you can't get fire access on all four sides, and I know you're not going for the two fifty, of potentially reducing the building length? And then therefore reducing the impact of the buffer and the other setbacks? And also, I applaud your way of calculating parking. It works because you don't want all that extra asphalt, but would you be willing to, I know this is a normal planning board issue, but have some sort of bank parking, an area for bank parking in case you needed it for the occasional three or four times a year where you do get more visitors or people leaving the park and there are spaces available?
Yes, I'll take your questions in reverse order. As far as land bank parking, that's something we're certainly willing to take a look at. You know, it's a concept that we're very familiar with, where you design a project as if it was built. And if it is, you know, if you need it, you can build it. As far as the building length, that's largely, you know, it's a, the building width is determined by the fact that it's a double-loaded corridor. And, you know, for us to reduce the building length, we'd have to make the building an L. And if we did that, that would potentially, or would likely, we looked at a couple of different scenarios, trigger more variances and more impact to the land that's there. What I mean by that is the topography drops from east to west. So what we were trying to do is line the buildings up with the contour the best that we could to limit the amount of land disturbance. If we made both buildings an L, that would increase the overall scope of the site development. But with that said, I, again, we're here to take your comments and respond to them, so we'll certainly take another look at that.
Going back to the parking side, I like what Chris was saying. And I do applaud that a lot of times we overbuild parking lots for all types of structures, including apartments. However, how do you end up limiting, if, say, those one-bedroom apartments end up having two vehicles? How do you end up limiting your vehicles on the property from the end and all of a sudden parking on the street and causing other congestion within the area? We can all say that here in the planning side of things, but when reality hits and your neighbors then have to deal with it, it then becomes a bigger issue for all of us.
No, I totally understand and I get it. Again, I've been doing this for twenty-some years, which has afforded us the opportunity, for better or worse, to build a lot of these projects using two spaces per unit, two point five spaces per unit in communities all across the whole county. We've gone back and many of those cases, using the same calculations that we are here, built the projects many times, as Mr. Santola mentioned, we included land bank parking, just in case. But I can say confidently, in no situation have we ever run into an instance where we had overflow parking on adjacent properties, which then would have allowed, would have, we would have wanted to build it, right? Because we don't want that situation. Or the court enforcement officer of that municipality would have been able us to require to build it. So the spaces and the calculations that we use, again, is based on precedent and does have a certain amount of overflow or guest or visitor parking built into it. But Mr., you know, just to kind of parlay the two comments together, if we are able to show some land bank parking, which we're certainly going to look into, and that situation did exist for some reason, then we would of course build a land bank parking. But I can say confidently, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Did you also take a look at, I can't tell what the dimension is, but the building on the left? Is that able to slide south, a little south on the cage? To within that seventy-five foot front setback or even closer to it by wrapping the parking around on the north face?
I think you're limited by the distance between the no-lets, you could need forty. That's about as close as it's going to be to slide down.
Well, you could lose about twenty feet of the parking spaces to the west, slide it down, wrap all those parking then on the north side and.
So I'm trying to understand the suggestion, just so we can take a look at it when we reconvene. So Josh, maybe you can help us in pointing. Are you suggesting limiting some of the stalls on the south side of the building?
I'm suggesting sliding the building south.
Okay.
Suggesting the parking that is to the south and maybe not all of it, and some of the parking to the west. That ends up getting wrapped up across the north. Again, I didn't take out my scale, I didn't, you know, play.
Yeah, no, I will, absolutely take a look at it. I don't want to say for certain that we can or can't, because there's a lot of contributing factors, whether it's the topography or the utilities or whatever, but I understand.
I get it. Other questions from the board?
Well, I think, I've listened to this when I was at the, the planning board meeting. And a lot of the stuff we're hearing, and I've seen stuff we're hearing that obviously we're trying to present our group again. But most of the stuff we're hearing, I think, is planning board issues rather than zoning board issues. I think we need to focus more on variances that they're asking for and requirements for the setbacks and the buffers and things like that, rather than other things that you've heard tonight.
Any questions on any of those?
No, based on what I've seen and the dimensions that I've got, if we were to vote right now, I'd say no. It's based on, is that back just too much of a discrepancy between the required and the proposed? There's no way you can josh a letter out to make that big.
Well, for what it's worth, that's why, at least, that's what the questions, the genesis of my questions were to see if there was an angle, if you would be able to minimize the relief requested. That was the whole purpose of my line of question, was to see if you could minimize it, so it's a little palpable.
And again, that's our intent, is to get the comments and come back to the more hopefully palpable time, so.
Yeah, I guess from my standpoint, if from my standpoint, I was over at McEwen, you know, that buffer is.
It's hard to.
It's important, yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say, it's important, right? So, you know, that includes the parking and everything else. And right now, they have a field there. So having a three-story building that no longer had, you know, that doesn't have a buffer, becomes a great shock, right, is what it comes down to. So, I mean, which is also one of the reasons I asked about, is it possible to move the building, right? You know, how can we minimize that? And similar with the, with the parking, how can we, how can we alleviate any potential issues for people parking on the streets around the area, right? So I didn't mean that those might, I don't know if anybody else has any more?
There might be on the street. The buffer, the buffer is huge. I'm looking at an eight-foot buffer, bar hundred feet is required, which is significantly.
Two feet off?
It's, it's, it's huge, hey? And from one of the prints that was provided, there's a big mass of growth and trees that this area is going to be. And from one of the prints that was provided, um, there's a big mass of growth in trees that this area is going to be covered, which is essentially everything that's buffering the residents at McEwen. Um, so that's a concern to me, that they're going to lose, I mean, it is, it's scrub woods, but it's still, it's still something that blocks the view. We understand something's going to be built there, but, but it's going to be right on top of them. Um, my other concern is, from the fire service point of view, the building is significantly longer than what's permitted by code, and I've got two sides of the building that, as a firefighter, I can't access with normal means that would keep personnel and equipment safe. I know we've got other buildings of this length or significantly longer than code allows in town, but those buildings have also had some type of a, if not a, a true road, but a, a, a road surface that's not usable, that, that gives fire access. I don't see how, and I understand that's planning and that's a fire marshal issue, but, um, but it's also a, a personal issue. Um, I don't see how this will allow that, and I don't even know, based on the tight configuration of the parking lot, how easy it would be to get the fire truck that has the resources for a three-story building. I don't know that I can get in there, so... That, that to me is a big concern, it's, it's human life, um...
Have you got conversations with the fire marshal at this point?
No, we are reading comments from them, um, I'm sure they'll, you know, may, maybe some of the ones you mentioned. But, I understand all the comments, you know, there are certain things we can do with the spacing of hydrants and the hose drag lengths, or looking to, um, there's a lot of different ways to do your fire access road, right? Some of them do it with like a grid neighbor system, where it's not really like a roadway that you use often.
Right, but it's an emergency egress.
Right, emergency egress that you could get to if you needed it. So, we can take a look at that. And I think with any design, once we finalize it, we provide, you know, turning templates for the actual emergency vehicles to prove that they can get in and out safely. But I'll certainly make a note to do that with whatever iteration we come back with, and investigate the idea of a, you know, emergency access road.
Yeah, I mean, one, one of the things that, and I don't know that it makes sense, I don't know that I should anything if you flip to a mirror image of the building and the parking, which then separates the buildings further, um, or if you get the parking on all sides, I don't know. I understand the need for less parking spaces, because there's a lot of the older complexity of just a lot of empty parking spaces, and as long as you're able to balance the need versus the requirement, um, with, with some land bank spaces, if, if they become available. This is a less walkable area than some of the other areas in town, just based on its location. I don't get it, no, yeah. Those are my primary concerns, my general.
Okay.
Josh, has the, uh, ingress and egress issue with the homeowners association of phase one been resolved?
That also came up during the planning board meeting, and that was actually one of their written comments that ended up in the MRB comment letter. So, I know that Mr. DiMarzo and his team are looking into that and where that currently stands.
All right, if there's some more comments from the board right now, I'll, uh, open it up to public comment.
And that was the plan strategy due to the postcards being sent out to all the residents? So, we were, we, the two areas, the chief, no, the period, no.
And that's what the council was a little different than that, that we were going to allow the representative feedback from the board ended there tonight, and I have public comment and a follow-up meeting. It's six one, I suppose.
Um, I guess we can see if there's people here to speak for or against.
If there's anybody here to speak for or against the project, you just raise your hand, and we'll see if anyone wants. Okay. Um, I'd like to open it up for public comment. As I mentioned, this board will not vote on anything, uh, this evening. We will be discussing this again in the October meeting. Public comment will not be closed at this meeting, we'll keep it open for the October, uh, meeting as well. Um, so with that, um, you may have the, uh, first, uh, person for public comment. So, as you come up, uh, we get limited five minutes, please speak into the mic, so if you have to move the mic, feel free to. State your name, your address, um, and, uh, where is yours?
Good, thank you. My name is Cheryl Savari, I live at fourteen Mountain Ash Trail, here in Webster. I have one question, um, everybody's noted this evening that the planning board, uh, had some comments, and we have, um, those notes. Um, there was one comment that was made in regards to, uh, I believe it was a question that they had, they didn't seem to have an answer or know what it is, so for clarity, the question was, uh, does the town in Webster have an expressive statutory provision or enacted a local law setting forth the conditions under which adjoining parcels may be deemed to have merged? In this particular case, if the plot of land is three point seven acres, it's now over thirteen. So, there's been a merger of two lots. Um, and we had a question in regards to what the planning board was asking, do we, don't we? So, if the board could clarify whether there is some sort of provision, what chapter and what section, does that provision follow? Thank you.
We'll take a look into that, I don't have the answer for you tonight. All right?
How are you doing, folks? Uh, my name is Charles Johnson, I'm at four four zero McEwen, which is on the northeast corner of the, uh, of the, of the diagram that you had there. Actually, probably the last house at the bottom of that road there, we go straight. Uh, and my concerns are the same as the ones that, that you all, that you all have, specifically as relates to the parking issue. Uh, more specifically, for me, I'm concerned with the influx of cars, right? If the only way from, and correct me if I'm wrong, the only access to this property is through McEwen Drive. I don't know if you can, yeah, there we go. Uh, if there's one way in, there's one way out, there's a few things. So, obviously, I, I have children, they have to walk up this road to Bay for the bus, trying to make a left-hand turn out of McEwen Drive onto Bay Road, this edition. Even if, I, I don't know the exact number that you have from the parking spots, uh, but even if it's sixty, we're talking about a significant number of cars and traffic, just on a daily basis, trying to get out of McEwen Drive, going either way. There's no public transportation here, uh, there's really no other way for residents that live there, excuse me, that live there, uh, outside of a vehicle. I'm not familiar with the data, math, that you guys are referencing, but ninety units, we don't know the breakdown of one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, just from a practical matter of a two-bedroom unit with two residents in this area, the likelihood that we have two vehicles seems to be high. Uh, and then if you expand that to three bedroom, um, obviously, we're increasing the number of vehicles. That's, again, going to flow through this single area there. Uh, the, the other issue is the buffer part. I understand that, from what I can tell from their, their drum, there, there is an attempt to, to kind of mitigate that. I did see they want to leave some of the tree line there, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, I think it actually stopped right before it got to my particular home. Uh, so, I, I'd really like that particular issue, uh, to be addressed, uh, in terms of what that's going to look like, where and how that buffer will actually be there. And to be honest, I'm not against the project at all. I, I don't think it's, it's unreasonable for someone to try to develop their land and property to do what they think. Uh, but, but in this case, given the size and the scope of these two pieces of, these two buildings crammed into this area, I know at the planning board, they started talking about density, right? Uh, again, this is a bigger area, I think she was referencing that earlier, where it's thirteen acres, uh, but they're really only using a small portion of that, whether that's developed or can be developed, I, I don't know. I just know that this structure, the way this is currently structured, uh, I see a significant impact on just our normal, everyday quality of life, just being at four four, four four McEwen Drive.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Hi. My name's Dave Geier, I live at four hundred McEwen Drive, at the end of the road. Um, when we were at the planning board, a number of us were here last week for the planning board meeting. Um, the engineer for Passaro spoke about a number of comparable properties, apartment complexes in Webster, uh, specifically Webster on the Green, um, Winding Creek Woods, and Picture Perfect, or Picture Parkway Apartments there. Um, my wife and I took a drive around, we looked on maps, we looked at these things, they're not even close. All the setbacks are, are buffers and setbacks are fully met. I looked at parking, because parking is, is a lot of discussion. Uh, and the, um, the first one has two and a half spaces, maybe three spaces each, same as the second one, not a comparable. Uh, Picture Parkway is interesting, because theirs is about one point four. So, okay, that's a fairly comparable. Uh, so my wife and I drove over there on the way here tonight, and every spot was pretty much full. Um, I'm really concerned about parking in this building. The setbacks, uh, half, half the setback in the front, uh, the buffer, we've talked about, eight feet or twenty feet. Um, the people, we can't go to their front door and say, oh, it's a hundred and thirty feet. They have the right to enjoy their entire yard, uh, in front, front yard. Um, parking, short by fifty-nine spaces, where are they going to park? Water View said that they'll regulate parking and require people not to park, or not to have cars registered. Where are they going to put them? They're going to put them on the queue, and my wife and I already have occasions, the, um, town, um, uh, water, the pumping station is at the end of McEwen, right by our property and, and our neighbors. And we already have occasions where I have to come out and stop and wait and move, move the vehicles. When we put another fifty cars on the queue and parking somewhere, uh, I'm worried that, uh, we won't be able to move it out of our neighborhood. And so, like, uh, Mr. Johnson, I'm not opposed to developing this project. I just ask that the board consider, how do we do this project by meeting all town codes and all variances? Uh, the, the buildings as their size and the parking as their size are just ridiculously over, over stacked. Um, putting a number, putting a, a building in there that makes, that fits the property, fits the, the area, and meets town code, makes a lot of sense. Maybe it's thirty units, that makes a lot of sense to me, and I would support that. You would see a lot of resistance go away if, uh, if these projects would meet code. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else, uh, report against the project? Uh, with that, break back to the board, any final, uh, last comments from the board?
There we go. We're done, we're not, we're not...
I think you heard, uh, everybody's concern, um, hopefully that helps, uh, a little bit with, uh, you know, things that you have to look at or to continue evolution of the project.
No, it definitely does, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you again next month.
All right, have a good night.
Good. That, uh, that concludes our scheduled matters, uh, we have two administrative matters, um, do I have to?
Well, we, we all right table.
Um, I make motion to table our review of apartments phase three, um, located in North Westport, Will Point Way, a local mile drive until the October, uh, planning board meeting. Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First, uh, administrative matter, uh, six-month review, uh, for a special permit to allow for heat pens at six oh four Drum Road.
How you doing, LA O'Lebuteau, six oh four Drum Road? Excellent, wow, how are you?
Good. Good. So, we, uh, we received a complaint, I don't have that, um, on main break, this second. Uh, the first complaint was, uh, chickens and ducks, I believe, uh, ducks were removed. Um, and then our, uh, code official went back to the site, um, and noticed that the chickens were then roaming free, which the zoning, uh, the zoning board, my understanding, had, uh, explicitly indicated, um, keeping it inside a chicken run. Uh, is my understanding. So, um, with that, how many?
Yeah, no, I, I'd actually like to, to reply to that. Um, I did receive a letter, um, and I immediately got back to Jim Montgomery. Um, actually, two of the, uh, complaints were completely false. Uh, we do have a field fence up, which is not the entire yard, that is not a free range, that would be considered a run. Um, you can't keep chickens inside the actual coop. Um, our run, again, is, is by no me, I sent pictures as well, along with this, I sent this to Josh Artuso immediately following. Um, there was also a complaint that our, our coop was not moved, which is an absolute lie. Uh, the coop was moved in March, um, so I'm not sure who inspected or whoever made the complaint. Um, but the coop was definitely moved, and I sent pictures to prove that. The ducks, uh, were not mine, they were not intended to stay there permanently. I sent this email, and I called Jim Montgomery and let him know, they were my parents' ducks, uh, they were out of town, and they were having work done on their pond. The ducks were there for maybe a week, maybe two tops, again, in an enclosed area, um, with absolutely no way to get onto anyone's other property, um, or for that matter, again, considering there's only a small amount where a neighbor could even see in our property, I, I'm really not sure, unless they were looking around, looking for trouble, uh, I'm not really sure why they would even know we had ducks. Um, but again, it's kind of disheartening, considering false accusations, and this is one of the issues I, I mentioned right before the end of the, the last time we met. Um, it's, you know, where, where anybody can just make a call, maybe they don't like you, maybe they don't like, they don't like what you're doing, and they can just call and make an accusation, uh, I, I think that's completely inappropriate. Um, again, I did send an email to Josh with pictures showing that that information was false. Uh, and as far as the ducks, an adult conversation with me would have cleared that up quickly.
So, I get it, um, I have, I have my own, so I, I, I understand, uh, some of it. Josh, if you would mind, would you, uh, after you log in, if you would mind going back to the, uh...
And, and I, I don't mean to interrupt, my, my, I did send pictures, uh, last week of what it looks like recently, and I believe you did have an inspector there today, uh, a woman named Cory. Um, and, uh, you know, she was there to, to see everything as well.
Do you go, do I, are you there?
Yeah, me neither.
Cory was there.
You're an inspector.
Cory is not an inspector, she's, she's, she's one of the zoning board members.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, someone, someone was there, and they could clearly see that everything, uh, was in regulation.
So, um, these are the... So, these are the photos, these are the photos that you sent over to Josh?
Those are the recent photos. I sent some back on May third and May fourth. I think I replied on May third. As you can see, that's where supposedly the coop still was. You can't miss it. That garden was there before I bought the property, and obviously you can see there is no coop there.
That is the?
That is the original spot of the coop.
Okay.
And as you can see, so, false accusations. That is the southwest quadrant where my permit is allowing me to have our chickens and our coop.
So what is the, what is the fence that is keeping the chickens?
There's, so that black fence keeps them in that area, and then I have a field fence, which you could see there. And then, that's the bad, the field fence is off fire because it's not the entire yard.
Okay.
And actually now it's even covered more because I had been planting sawgrass and certain privacy shrubbery.
No top cover over that fence right here?
Absolutely not. No, and you can see, you can barely see it. And again, unless you're looking for something. That's my son's supper now, and a trampoline. Oh, there's a coop again in the southwest quadrant.
Cory, what did you see when you went there?
I visited the property today, and I visited a couple of other times once I realized it was on the agenda. You naturally have to pull into the driveway to even see that there's a chicken coop there. And any of my visits, I didn't even see a chicken. I'm sure it was still there.
Yeah, definitely.
But it was, it was quiet. It was well-kept. There was a trampoline. It was a kids' yard. And I never saw any evidence other than the coop was there, so obviously chickens had been there. But, but it's in a location where I couldn't see it. And I've not seen them roaming around, but I haven't, it's not like I go there every day. I go through the street frequently, but not, not every day. I'm gonna head, I read through the minutes because I was not present for the March meeting because I was trying to understand what the conditions were and what the discussion was. I did go back and try and look at the video, but I could not locate the video, so then this was what I had to go with. And I didn't see any conditions within the zoning board discussion that limited the location where they had to be, and limited the coop location. But it didn't say anything about the chickens being locked in a certain area or not being allowed to range. It didn't, it just noted the location of the chicken coop and the next little mayhem. So that's kind of what I went looking for, was what, you know, based on what was documented within the minutes. I don't know what was on the special use permit. I don't know if that the zoning board set the conditions and whatever would decide it, so I don't.
I do have the special permit here, and approved with conditions, location of the coop will be located at the southwest property, to the corner of the house. No more than eight hounds allowed. Follow-up review after six months, special use. So again, they're not free-ranging. There is an enclosed run. That is not my entire yard, but there is a fenced-in area.
Well, is this, is it a six-month review? I don't know the nature. Josh, do you know the nature of the complaint itself?
I have it here. Yes, and the neighbors, I believe that have some concerns are here tonight. They have provided photos and videos of their own that we have available if the board is interested in hearing those.
I would be interested in hearing those because I stopped by the property twice, and once I ate T and chickens, once I didn't, I swallowed inside the black fence area. But I also, you know, Jim has been to the site. We received a letter from Jim on eight twenty-three, and he indicated he saw chickens roaming the yard, right? He didn't say they were outside the yard, but roaming the yard.
And?
Chickens are able to jump over a three-foot fence, a four-foot fence. That's why I was asking if there's a top over and over.
Can I say they have never gone into another yard?
Sure.
They don't go in, they don't coop in other yards. They don't eat in other yards. They stay in our enclosed area, and there's a very small area that you could even see inside. Again, unless you're looking to cause problems for our office.
Sure.
And again, I, can we talk about the false accusations? Because?
No, let's, let's get the folks up that have concerns.
That's fine, and I still have more I'd like to say. I did write something up that I would like to say at some point.
Well, we'll see. Let's see what these folks have to say.
So, we'll open up the public comment at this point. Is there anybody who wants to speak?
Hi, Pete Scavera.
Can you speak up?
Pete Scavera and Terry Scavera. We're at five nine two Don Richland. Our property borders, our property borders the entire north boundary and the east boundary. So, again, the coop was moved. That was not us. I applaud that balance to them on the last. That was, that was, I applaud board. The coop was moved, and it was moved to the southwest corner. I have no problem, problem with that. I think it's a balanced compromise. The only problem we have, and some of the other neighbors that were hesitant to come, is as we come up our driveway where that fence is, it's, the character of the neighborhood is not a farm. And with that fence there, the chickens are there, by the time that you come, you may not see them, but they're there all the time. And we're very, very close to where we are. I mean, people whisper, you can hear things. The chickens are constantly at the door. And my primary concern is just the character of the neighborhood. It's not a farm. I don't wish to see a farm when they come up.
And if I could just mention, like, Cory, you said that you've gone through the property a couple of times. If you're entering the property from Drum Road, you're entering into Mr. Realbaldow's home. If you were to come up our private drive, you would see from our view what we see. His backyard is a front yard to three separate homes. So when you're going in his driveway, it's a nice secluded little property. But when you're viewing it from our private drive, it's affecting the front yards of other neighbors. We live in a nice neighborhood. It's quiet, great neighbors. So we're not used to this kind of confrontation. We're not, we're just not used to it. So?
What's the, what would the perfect scenario be recognizing the location of the coop, which you say is acceptable? So if it's the location of the fence that?
Yeah, the southwest, the southwest corner is fantastic. I think perhaps limited to an area around the southwest corner would be ideal, ideal.
And I, I believe that that was the original, the board originally, that was the intent, was to put the coop in an enclosed area, and I believe his transcript from the last meeting said, I'm going to move in. No one will be able to see or hear my chickens in that area. And to us, we're like, that's fine, because that will avoid conflict with a neighbor that we have no interest in.
So Josh, can you, excuse me, can you show with your marker where the neighbors have talked about?
The coop is that way somewhere?
This is where the coop is. And where do they, where are they going to limit it to? This corner of the property so that it's not viewable from this area, is my understanding. Is that right? Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, is that right, that whole, do you want it limited to that area?
Do you see the arrow? The blue arrow, down arrow?
No.
With the cursor?
With the cursor, yeah.
Is it red?
It was on there. You see the garage structure in that area?
Yep.
Maybe from that front corner of the garage over?
I still get some of that character, but not that too.
So, you got that, Josh? Have you got the controls?
Yes.
I just want to make sure Rob talked about the same, that's all.
Yeah.
You're going back to the?
An equitable area in the southwest corner.
We can pull that back on the head of yours. We don't have to put it in this. We just go back to the man for a second. All right, so where's the area?
Currently, right there.
Right? And they just described everything around that bend there.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a natural family of chickens.
All right, so where's the applicant? Can you see that where you're marking it?
Yeah, so I can see it.
Is that, is that objectionable?
I think, I'd be, I'd be okay with at least to where the, our garage is. Because we have, we have over a half an acre.
Just let, let's check even here for a minute. So I think the arrows will go over to the garage, right?
Yeah, so the, let's call it the east corner of the garage to the east, keeping the chickens in that area.
Southwest corner of the garage.
So?
Although, the west corner, yes.
Okay, I had it backwards. My apologies.
And then all the way around to the coop?
Essentially west where your, your fence garden is. Kind of giving you a tree.
Do you see the outline of the garden, the old garden?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Can you take the, the corner of the garage? It kind of lines up with the middle of the, the centerline of that tree, and just throw that line down like that, I think. It sounds like, that's where you're looking at, right?
Yeah, like I said before.
No, that's all right. Just stop right there. One second. Has he ever been good with that?
Yeah, not really, but I mean, if that's still the way I can keep my chickens, I mean, we have, we have over, we have almost, I have almost three quarters of an acre. So we have all that space. It's all covered. You can barely see the fence from their driveway. You can barely see it. It's point six.
Maybe I'm a little?
Point six. You can barely see it from their driveway. It's covered with shrubbery and sawgrass, which is going to be huge in another year. You won't even see the fence.
It's going to be barren.
Yeah, for six months out of the year.
Six months out of the year.
What we're not going to do is argue back and forth, okay? I'm trying to understand from the applicant's standpoint, what the neighbors are saying they can live with. That's problematic for you.
So?
No, that's, I just think it's wrong. I think it's wrong that we're being forced to move it like that when they can't even see it, unless they're trying to find something to look at.
Wait, the question is, it's not whether?
That's all I'm saying, sir.
I've been saying whether you can live with that.
Yes, I can live with that, if that's my only choice.
I'm not saying, Josh, I'm saying, is that acceptable to?
Yes.
Okay, so can we somehow, Josh, get on the record, describing that area that's agreeable to the authorities? Or someone could get that on the record back in?
Yeah, and that is, so if we, if we were to draw a line from the southwest corner of the garage to the northwest corner of the old garden area?
Excellent.
Like this? Yep. And then perpendicular to the property line on the south side, the chickens would be located to the west of that, that lot. Yeah, can we take a screenshot of that?
So now that we've been conceded, does that, does that help you now in terms of?
I know, I know exactly where.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure. I'm not saying you have to agree with it, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I understand. Yep.
This would work for, for the residents?
Yeah, that's, that's it. We assume the variance is four, right, in April.
So, may I, I just, I, out of my curiosity, I understand the zoning, zoning in, John, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it may have changed. Doesn't necessarily allow it. The zoning in the village of Webster knows about it. We're not in the village. We're not talking about the village, but at the end of the day, your concern is that there are animals, poultry, that are roaming. I'm not saying they are only staying on the property. I'm presuming they're only staying on the property, but because they are farm animals in the nice neighborhood, you have a concern that those animals are there, is what I heard. I'm not trying to be condescending. I'm not trying to, but that, that's what I heard. Is that correct?
Well, that is correct. We were, we were not here at the original, so?
Sure.
This was our concern. Mr. Realbaldow had a few chickens, and it was never anyone's intent not to get along with the neighbor. So we never said anything. We were kind. We were, we were whatever. Then there were more chickens. Then there was a rooster, who became extremely unsightly. And then, he had a pig that was in my driveway and that walked out my front door. And that's when I said, I need to report it to the town. So it was just the acceleration of the farm animals. So when the board said, okay, you have a six-month special use permit to keep your chickens in this area, we said, okay, fine. We once again will try. We do not want to deal with a hostile neighbor. We have submitted evidence that we have hostile neighbors.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I would say.
It's important that you understand that we are not just, oh, we live in a nice neighborhood. We don't want to live next to chickens.
There's no hostility in what you are. There's been no hostility. That's absolutely ridiculous.
Please, I appreciate it. I just wanted to understand the concern. I wasn't trying to be, not to say, I'm trying to?
I just needed to explain our part.
I have no problem asking, you know? The kind of sidebar conversation up here, maybe you could hear it. Is there, is there a, is it?
Can we put the?
Yeah, thank you, Josh. Would that be acceptable as well as a, as a compromise? I don't, you see the, the second line up there?
Yeah, I thought the, I thought the compromise would be further up.
Am I asking?
No, I, I prefer the first one.
Yes.
Okay.
But does it, I understand what you prefer, understood. Does that really change?
Yeah, from, yeah, from our front porch, from where we are, when we sit out front on the side porch, the chickens are down by those three arboribies quite then. Right near, right near where the cursor is.
Right, so?
A lot, a lot with sight goes sound also. So it's not that they don't make any noise, and you can say, oh, it's a sound of nature, but it's not. It's a chicken. But again, we would deal with something like that if it wasn't, if it was contained in an area where it really didn't affect us.
So, in an ideal world, and that's, that's kind of where the question is going, right? So if the, the second line, the further east line, is upheld, the chickens wouldn't be by those arboribies. The chickens would be blocked by the garage. And maybe we need to put a line across the north side as well, right? Because theoretically?
It's really, it's a dense area.
Okay, so, so the second line where Josh's cursor is, the chickens would be blocked by the garage. The chickens wouldn't be backed by the arboribie. I will have questions for the applicant as well, but, and I understand the noise. If this was a dog, unfortunately, my dog barks his head off constantly, right? Then you would have a dog barking, and that is noise as well. So I, I hear you, but what is from, what is, as John was pointing out, what is the difference between the? what is the difference between the, the east line and the west line, if the chickens are staying in that confined area?
It's completely out of sight with the west side.
Is it not completely out of sight with the east line?
No. I, I think Josh has some pictures of it, so you can see. Yeah, there's the, our driveway, and there's the current fence where it is, which goes off from that east corner of the garage right now.
The, the, the middle picture, is that building in the upper, okay, sorry. Uh, is that building off on the, uh, right side, is that the garage?
That is.
Right where your cursor is now is the west corner.
That is the west.
Rear west.
The rear west.
Yeah.
Okay. So if the chickens were on the other side of that, you wouldn't see them, correct?
That, that corner would be ideal, right there, that's, that's the original blue line.
Well, the original blue line is closer to the driveway in front of that.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I, I don't think so.
This, this.
That's the second blue line.
That's the second blue line.
There's cursor line.
That would encompass the whole garage, but still be out of your line of sight, because it's hidden by the building. In that, I have no idea, the drive is.
Yeah, it's a wood pipe, yeah.
I mean, the blue house is, is the applicant's house, is that correct?
Yes.
And those are older pictures?
I, I'm, understood.
Well, that, that gives the applicant more of their own yard to use, but still shields the neighbors from Don Bridge.
Where is that middle picture taken from?
Middle picture is taken from our driveway, that is just to show you what we see when it.
Where it says five ninety-two.
Yeah, I was gonna say roughly where five ninety-two is.
It just shows you, you know, in the winter time where all the beautiful greenery is on, that is our view.
Yep, no, I get it. Uh, you were mentioning that you sit in your front porch, I'm assuming it's that, uh, concrete area, um.
Right there.
Right there, roughly?
Yeah.
So, the views from that area would be blocked by the garage to the chickens on the eastern line. Okay. So going back to my original question, that eastern line, again, if the chickens were to stay within that eastern line, right? They, they're chickens, um, if they were to stay within that eastern line, they would be blocked from view, from, from the area that you sit in the morning, having coffee or, or whatever it is, correct? So, going back to, as John was mentioning, would that be acceptable, an acceptable compromise to use that second line, the eastern line, leaving the eastern portion of the applicant's property, um, void of chickens?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any more questions for you guys, I don't know if anybody else does. If you wouldn't mind, take a, take a seat, and I would like, uh, the applicant to come back up, please. You do live in a smaller, uh, you know, smaller area, I'm going to call it half acre for lack, you know, for, you know, for rounding purposes. Here is the compromise that is proposed, the eastern blue line that is shown on the property, the chickens need to stay within that area. Now, I'll be honest, I don't know how you're going to keep your chickens in that area. That is going to be up to you to figure out. I know chickens like to jump and flutter and fly and, and whatnot, so, but that, that is your responsibility to keep the chickens within that area, uh, to be able to maintain the variance moving forward. I look at this, I think this is a, a win-win, because nobody's happy, um, but it allows you to keep your chickens. Your neighbors won't have to see, they may still have to hear the chickens, but you won't, they won't have to see the chickens. Yes, do you have any, you know, I, and I understand you heard the other comments regarding all the others, um, adults. This variance is only for eight chickens at this point, you know, roosters, I get it, you purchase chickens from.
They've been gone, I'm pretty sure.
You purchase them from, from Tractor Supply, you have no idea what they are until they start crowing, and, you know, it takes a couple of weeks to get rid of them, I get it. Pigs, you know, whether it happened or not, I'm, I'm assuming there's photos and, and whatnot, can't happen, right? We're at a, a residential neighborhood, we are not in a farm. So, with that, I'm willing to extend it another six months with the eight hens. I don't know if the board has questions, other additional questions or comments?
Six months would take it to, what, March?
Yep.
I don't know if they're ready to active through winter and early spring. March is still, it gets up to snowball, right? I'd like to extend it to May at least.
Okay.
That's, that's my.
My chickens are out, probably a little on the school.
Wow.
I have no problem with that.
Well, there's a problem, honestly.
You don't know.
We're going to hear about it.
Right.
It's special use.
It's going to be nine months or whatever, uh, I think makes sense, because if, if it goes well, no problem. But if it doesn't, we'll hear about it.
And if goes well, then we could extend it for a long period of time, but if not, then.
I think the best test to extend it, I mean, I think nine months makes sense, unless you want to make it longer, just because they, there's a mechanism for any dissatisfaction or anything to be presented to us.
I'd say maybe, I'd say maybe the nine months, and then extend it to the springtime, and then, uh, make it a year after that, if, you know, if, if there's no issues.
So, May.
Yeah, I think May's only work. Yep. All right, um, so I have a motion to extend the, um, special use permit for six oh four Drum Road for no more than eight hens, um, with the, uh, previous conditions that were set forth in addition to the, can I reference the drum?
Okay.
Um, with the eastern line indicated on the attached drawing from the southeast corner of the existing garage, through the, uh, southeast corner of the existing, uh, garden area, to the west, to Drum Road. Chickens are to be maintained within that area, uh, and not, not beyond that area. We're granting a, the nine month, nine month, um, special use permit, um, to be reviewed in the May, uh, May zoning warrant. Do I have a?
Second.
That's fine.
Mr. Short.
Aye.
Mrs. Bolo.
Aye.
Mr. Santola.
Aye.
Mr. Howza.
Aye.
Mr. Light.
Aye.
You have your variance, uh, extended for nine months to maintain the eight, eight hens. Personally, you keep those hens within the marked area of the plant. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Should, should there be a time period, like, if it needs to occur, or?
How does he keep them in there? Does he got to have a fence now? Does he have to have a?
I only have July. Okay, um, I will make a motion to approve the July ninth, twenty twenty-four zoning permits.
Yes, sir.
All those in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
August is next month.
Will do it now?
Do we have them?
Uh.
No, no.
No? Oh, should I review the July ones then? Okay.
We have them.
Okay, that's done, okay. Uh, motion, uh, board meeting is, uh. Concluded, thank you everybody.